Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Somersworth School Board meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Maggie Larson.
Here.
Carrie Clark.
Excuse.
Sarah O'Brien-Hart.
Here.
Crystal D. St. Croix.
Here.
Marsha Brown.
Here.
Bridgette Jameson.
Excused.
Carly Prescott.
All right. Can you all join me in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you. I love to see so many people here. Bittersweet, for sure. We will start, actually, with a recognition of our retirees before we start our regular board meeting. We have two board members that are regretfully not here but are sending their best wishes, and I'll get into that later. So, we're going to start the end of the 25 school year retirements. Superintendent Shea?
Thank you, Board Chair Larson. We have close to 140 years of service among eight individuals that we're recognizing here, including one who's only being recognized for one year, although he has many more than that, but we happen to have the pleasure of him retiring from our district. So, we've got Idlehurst, Somersworth Middle School and Somersworth High School represented this evening, and no Maplewood folks, but I'd like to ask if Idlehurst, if we could have Liza Coco or Kate Gove, whoever's going to kick us off, and then if it makes sense, Liza, if you're prepared, you can go in the order you'd like with your retirees and with the presenters.
You're not ready?
You're not ready? Because you're not going to be ready, period? Would you like someone less emotional to take over this for you?
Should we start at the high school or do we have to start at the lower one?
You're good. Be sure.
Good Lord. So, first of all, I guess it's the most important thing to notice that all four of our retirees all chose to reside in the city. They raised their kids here, and they're all here, and I think that's probably was the hardest part. It's a pretty special day for everybody. So, this is a moment I've literally been dreading since December. Each year this time brings a bittersweet mix of celebration and sorrow as we honor those who have given so much to our school community. And this year, we say goodbye to four incredible individuals whose combined 77 years of dedication have shaped generations of students and have left a mark we'll never forget. All right. So, the first one, Mr. Sears, Renee. She's here with her family, her gorgeous grandkids. They've all been raised here in this city. For the last 24 years, Renee has worked in our preschool and our kindergarten programs. She has given her heart and soul to Somersworth's youngest population. Renee is the kind of person who rarely misses a day. In fact, just as today, she tried to fill out a sick form and didn't know how to do it. Rain, snow, sleet, or hail, she is outside, well, I'm hiding inside, from the safety of the weather, and she's out there weathering the storm 177 days a year, greeting every single child with warmth and love as they step off the bus. When I asked her what she plans to do next year, she gave me the most honest and heartfelt, joy-filled answer: nothing. And honestly, Renee deserves that. She's earned her rest, her peace, and her time with her kids and grandkids as she moves to Manchester and begins this next beautiful chapter. I asked one of her classroom teachers, Ms. West, to describe her. She said Renee is committed, hardworking, professional, and deeply intuitive. She shows up every single day for the children, supporting every learner, mentoring staff, adapting instruction, and quietly transforming lives. Renee, we will miss you more than words can express. Thank you for showing us what true dedication looks like. We are grateful for all you've given. Enjoy doing nothing. You've earned every minute. And she'll be back to sub, too. Thank you, Renee. All right. Now, Val, Mrs. Kay, Mrs. Kretschmar. For 17 years, Val has poured every ounce of her energy, creativity, and love into this school and into the community where she also raised her own children. She's been the one behind the scenes and often front and center, because she loves to be in the center, making everything work, fixing what's broken, and somehow being two steps ahead of the rest of us at all times. From fundraising back in the day, running all the boosters, from hallway hugs to bulletin boards today, Val does it all, sometimes reluctantly, famous for her creative board making, and always willing to step in before anyone even knows they need help. Val's my go-to person. Honestly, I'm still not sure how I'll function without her around next year. She makes my job easier, just for being her. But beyond the logistics, what really sets Val apart is her heart. Every student is greeted with a warm smile, a hug, and a genuine care. Her students adore her, and we do, too. Though she may be retiring from the classroom, we all suspect she'll be walking her dog perfectly timed with school arrival and dismissals, finding ways to say hi, check in on us, making sure we're doing everything right, and somehow still helping out. And when she's not doing that, she'll be off traveling the world with Greg, finally stopping to smell the roses. Val, your spirit is woven into the fabric of this school. Thank you for your years of unwavering commitment and compassion. We are going to miss you immensely, and this community will miss you as well, but you cannot go far, because you'll sub, too. All right. So, this one. All right. Let's talk about Mrs. Foley. Sometimes in this process, you learn something new about a person. I learned that Mrs. Foley was an English major and once worked at Timberland. She thought she was going to do business until she got a very silly idea, before deciding while raising her boys to go back to school and earn her master's in teaching. That kind of bold, heart-led decision is just so Carol. Eighteen years later, here she is, ready to close this chapter and begin another. Carol has taught first, second, and third grade, but we all know her first grade has her heart. Her classroom is a place of calm warmth and joy. When you're in there, you don't want to leave. She's in early, stays late, and often pulls her husband, Tim, along for help, which can easily turn into a full day of a Saturday volunteering in her classroom. Sorry, Tim. Maybe now you both can actually retire, if Carol allows it, of course. Carol doesn't always see how amazing she is. I'll never forget when she came in this December to tell me she was retiring. Surprising, I immediately started bawling. She was so shocked, she said, "I'm so sorry. I didn't think it was that big of a deal." But it is a big deal, Carol. You are a big deal. You've shaped lives, you've mentored colleagues, and you've filled this school with so much quiet strength and care. When I asked one of her teachers and her dear friend, Jen responded, "She is the best teammate ever. She is a wealth of knowledge in terms of curriculum and behavior management. She always remains calm, cool, and collected in tough situations. I've learned a great deal just by observing how she is with her students and how she handles each situation with care. She has a heart of gold and has been an incredible mentor, both in school and life. I have so much respect for her, and others seek her advice. We'll miss your kind presence, but we're also so very, very happy for you. Please come visit us and maybe even sub. Thank you, Carol, for being an incredible educator and just an all-around amazing human being. We love you, and we are so proud of you." All right. The last one. Mrs. Franker. Again, her family's here. For the past 19 years, Jo has poured her heart into our Somersworth community. She began in Title I at Maplewood and found her calling in ESOL just two years later. Since then, she has built bridges between cultures, between families, and between hearts. Jo has this rare gift. She makes everyone feel welcome, valued, and heard. Her work has touched families from all over the world, and her impact goes far beyond the classroom. She's organized ESOL events, created inclusive spaces, and started the Somersworth Ready Together Coalition, an initiative that nine years later is thriving, thanks to her vision and her leadership. Her role on the Universal Team, her voice and leadership, and the quiet strength have been instrumental in our school's success. We'll miss her deeply, not just for what she's done, but for who she is. Jo, thank you for your passion, your tireless work, and your commitment to making sure every student and every family sees, seen, and supported. You've helped shape not just a school, but a better community. Thank you for all you've done. All right. So, I just need to say one thing very clearly. These four amazing educators will be very hard to replace. To Renee, Val, Carol, and Jo, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Your years of service, your unwavering dedication, your love for children and learning have built a legacy that will live on in every student, every colleague, and every hallway of this school. We wish you all the happiness, rest, and joy you so richly deserve. Congratulations and happy retirement.
Thank you, Liza. Thank you, Kate. Renee, Jo, Carol, Val. That's 78 years of service in Somersworth. Pretty amazing. Somersworth High School is next. If Mr. Tebow could come join us, we have two retirees being recognized this evening from the high school. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, everyone. So, we have two big retirements this year who've been with us for a lot of years. Both have been with us the last six years that I've been. I'm going to call up Pam Govey first, who's going to help me talk about Lynn. And I want to say one thing about Lynn, a quick anecdote. Every year, I think for the whole six years that I've been here, Lynn has written me a letter at the end of the year. I've come to call it kind of a State of the Union. There've been years where it's been positive, and there's been years where it's like, this was a tough year, here's where we got to get better. But through those letters and through the feedback that Lynn has shared year after year, one thing always comes out, and that's how much she cares for the students, the families, the city of Somersworth. Lynn is the type of person who puts her students first. She puts her colleagues first. She would do anything for any one of us. She cares deeply, and I don't expect that to change with her retirement. I'm going to introduce Pam Govey, who's going to say a few more words about Lynn.
This is a brand thing. So, I've seen this on American Idol. They have to move the thing. So, I'm honoring Lynn today for her amazing 12 years of dedicated service at Somersworth High School. Lynn and I became quick friends from the start. There's nothing quite as sweet as having a coworker in the same age bracket. We have been able to share lots of memories and are pretty much on the same wavelength, having grown up in the same decades. It was so much fun rejoicing together every step of the way when our daughters shared the same news at the same time they were having babies. We each brought in our little ultrasound pictures, coincidentally, we didn't know we were each bringing them, their first doctor's visits, and the same day. It was a fun nine months, and our girls became moms, and we became grandmothers two weeks apart. Lynn grew up in the Somersworth area, having graduated from Somersworth High School. She loves to talk about her roots and takes great pride in her community. Lynn has an awesome family, three beautiful daughters, one is here tonight, and four handsome grandsons, which she will tell you all about, and it's so much fun. And if you go to her desk, you'll see pictures of them all. With her strong spirit of integrity, a love for learning, and compassion, these qualities have naturally been passed along down through the generations to her family. Lynn brought these strengths of integrity, love for learning, and compassion with her back to the school, and we're extremely grateful that she did. I have personally watched Lynn, over the years, giving students excellent support in every area of study. She has taken her responsibility to the students very seriously and uses every moment to encourage success. She goes out of her way to be super-organized and is prepared to easily reinforce new materials, from taking notes in a binder, preparing to support for a test, writing an essay, or reading a required book to be familiar, so she'll be on top of it, which she always was, is. Throughout her career here at the high school, Lynn has been flexible and patient under, at times, difficult working conditions. She bravely endured a couple of serious health issues and surgeries and returned back to school with a smile and a positive attitude. Lynn has loved her job, establishing many friendships with teachers and administrators. She has always been an advocate for herself and others regarding safety, fairness, and equality. Along with this, she is shown to have a great listening ear, which I will miss, including words of wisdom. I will miss our short hallway chats, many laughs, and the sheer presence of having a like-minded, age-relatable friend here at school. Thank you for giving so generously your all to each student each and every day. When you come in to substitute, I'll be seeking you out. I'm positive that we will continue hanging out and sharing our grandma stories. They are the best. We will all miss you. I'm sure of it. And I just want to make another little presentation. If you all know, we have these shirts, Finish Strong. So, I thought it would be a neat idea, since the week before, I said to Lynn, I said, "You don't really have to take that class again. I mean, you don't have to do all that." She goes, "Oh, yes." She says, "I'm going to finish the same way I started. I'm going to finish strong." So, Desi Brown was kind enough to make you your own shirt, and the back says, "I finished. I finished strong 2015." So, anyway, that is yours. Thank you. Love you.
And Caitlin Carrington is going to go up and say a few words about George Hiles-Horn.
Good evening. Caitlin Carrington, Director of the Career Tech Center. Very grateful to have the opportunity to present one of our school counselors and would just like to acknowledge all of our retirees for their commitment to providing an excellent and loving educational experience for all of our students in this community. With 18 years at Somersworth, but many more at other schools, Mr. George Hiles-Horn, a longtime school counselor at Somersworth High School. George started his career at Spalding, came to Somersworth for 12 years. He hopped over to Sanford for a few and then returned to Somersworth for these past six years. It feels only fitting that he's now headed to one final destination, a well-earned, long-term summer vacation. I like to think that George must be very, very young when he started at Somersworth, since he was also a guidance counselor that I had. Over the years, he has served in numerous roles at the varying schools he's been at, including Director of Guidance, where he oversaw the master scheduling, state assessments, and then ventured into the early days of website design for our counseling office. I feel like it might have been on Yahoo GeoCities back in the day. The Excel, it was, yeah, yeah. I think it was like that, yeah. The Excel template we share each year with our teachers with the master schedule is the original format that he created over 20 years ago. But George's contributions extend far beyond logistics and GeoCity websites. He's always brought a deeply caring, student-centered approach to his work. His calm and approachable demeanor made him a trusted adult for many students and staff. In spaces where decisions were being made, George was consistently a voice reminding us to consider the full context of a student's life, helping us all to stay grounded in that perspective. Outside of the professional realm, George is a man of wide-ranging interests and quiet talents. Back when we were in high school, there was a longstanding, now confirmed rumor that he was in a band and may have been the lead singer. Long before Google searches made things easy, a group of students discovered that outside in the music world, he went by the name Butch and had recordings out there. Someone managed to track down some music, probably likely on Napster, burned it to a CD and brought it to prom, where George's music was played for a whole new audience. Music continues to be a meaningful part of his life, and I'm sure it will get even more attention in his retirement. Another interest of Mr. Hiles-Horn is bike riding, specifically loving long bike rides, often commuting home far over to the bridge in Maine when he used to live there. He has a strong appreciation for traditional skills. Spending time out in the woods, he used to look for roots and herbs and spices, researching and trying out old traditional recipes, and eventually authoring a book on brewing, and even being invited to share his expertise and give a training on the subject at Williamsburg, Virginia. George appreciates good, quality food. He always knows a good restaurant to visit, many of them a hidden gem. For many of us at the high school, he's how we found the best chicken shawmer around at Little Webbinin' to Go. When George returned to Somersworth six years ago, it was during a moment of real need. The job had been posted, and no applications came in. He hadn't worked in schools for some time, and he hadn't planned on returning, but he heard that Somersworth needed some help, and he came. He really stepped up to the plate then. George, thank you for the steady hand, the kind heart, and the impact you've had on our students and schools. We issue a retirement with lots of time for creativity, more music, more hidden gems of restaurants, and stretches of time to relax. Rock on, George, and happy retirement.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Caitlin. Thank you, Lynn. Thank you, George/Butch. And last up, we have two retirees being recognized by Mr. Lampron from the middle school. Jim?
Don't look at me in case I cry, please. First, I'm going to recognize Mark Holt Shannon. I don't believe he's here tonight, but I want to make sure he gets a public shout-out. So, it's not often we get to honor someone who's only been with us for a year, but in that short time, Mark made a lasting impact on all of us at SMS. Though his time at the middle school was brief, his influence was anything but small. Mark came super highly recommended as a writing extraordinaire and a photography extraordinaire from Dover, and from the moment he arrived, he lived up to every bit of that expectation and that reputation. His passion for writing and photography, his dedication to helping students find their voice, and his commitment to excellence were evident in everything he did. Even in just a year, he touched many lives, guiding students to reach new heights in their writing and inspiring his colleagues with his creativity and professionalism. While we wish we could have had Mark longer, we're grateful for the time we had him and for the mark that Mark left on the school. We're hopeful that he has an incredible retirement. He certainly has earned it. We know that whatever comes next, he'll be just as extraordinary as he was a teacher at the middle school. So, congratulations, Mark, and there'll always be a place for him to sub at SMS. Okay. This is the one. This is the one when I got news that this staff member was retiring, I immediately went into like, oh, we're going to have a school board meeting, and this staff member is going to have to speak to it, and I'm going to have to do my absolute best to get through it, because this staff member means a lot to me personally and to our building as well. But there's no way I would have missed this moment. It's such a special opportunity to publicly say thank you to one of the absolute best. For those of you who don't know, Donna has been a paraprofessional in the middle school for just around 25 years. Donna is an absolute cornerstone and a person who simply cannot be replaced. Donna's been a steady presence we've all relied on. She's the one who shows up every day with kindness, dedication, and a willingness to support colleagues, but most importantly, our students, especially those who need it most and need her most. She's exceeded every expectation time and time again. Donna, let me tell you, you're certainly welcome to come back to the middle school and sub at any time. You've earned this well-deserved retirement, but I think we all know this. The school is going to miss you in ways words can't fully capture. One of my favorite memories with Donna is from a staff meeting where we did a thank-you exercise, and we had staff stand next to her chart paper, and we just had staff go around and share what they appreciated about that person and what they were thankful for and what that person brought to our school, and Donna's chart just filled up, and you could tell the ink just eased out of the pen from staff members that were so easily able to just communicate what Donna meant to them and what she meant to our building and how they appreciated everything that she did for staff and for students. The gratitude recognition from all corners of the room were evident. That's who she is, someone who leaves a lasting positive impression on everyone she meets. Donna will be missed more than you'll ever realize. The impact you've had on our school and our students, and each of us is immeasurable. Somersworth Middle School will never quite be the same without you, and we're all a little bit better for have had the privilege of working alongside you. We wish you nothing but the best in your retirement. You've earned it, and then some. People like you are rare, and everyone needs a Donna in their life and in their school. Enjoy this next chapter, and know that you'll always have a place here with us at SMS. Congratulations, Donna, and thank you for everything.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Donna, and thanks to Mark in his absence. So, again, that's about 100, almost 150 years of service to Somersworth, which is pretty special. And I'll echo what everybody said. That should be pretty apparent to everybody in the audience tonight and everybody at home. If you would like to substitute in the Somersworth schools, you're welcome to. Thank you to all of our retirees. The board's probably going to say, yeah, but really, it's been an honor. I am humbled and honored to be working in this district and working with all of you. Thank you for your years of service. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And since there's such a big group here, we do have kind of a section. No pressure, but if anyone would like to come up to the microphone to say a few words, you're in 4K, and it'll be forever. You are welcome to. Thank you to all of our retirees. The board's probably going to say, yeah, but really, it's been an honor. I am humbled and honored to be working in this district and working with all of you. Thank you for your years of service. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. And since there's such a big group here, we do have kind of a section. No pressure, but if anyone would like to come up to the microphone to say a few words, you're in 4K, and it'll be forever. You are welcome to. You can think about it. I'm sure the school board's going to say just a couple of words. I will be very simple in my statements, because Ms. Coco had the emotional one, and I'll pull it together. I've said this before, but I really, my wish for everyone is that what you've put in for care and love and patience and just really changing lives come back to you tenfold, to you and your family. I think that being in this profession and being with students and being just such dedicated, loving human beings that we're so grateful for as a community, there's no words other than, I hope it comes to... The school is going to miss you in ways words can't fully capture. One of my favorite memories with Donna is from a staff meeting where we did a thank-you exercise, and we had staff stand next to her chart paper, and we just had staff go around and share what they appreciated about that person and what they were thankful for and what that person brought to our school. And Donna's chart just filled up, and you could tell it just, the ink just eased out of the pen from staff members that were so easily able to just communicate what Donna meant to them and what she meant to our building and how they appreciated everything that she did for staff and for students. The gratitude recognition from all corners of the room were evident. That's who she is, someone who loves, leaves a lasting positive impression on everyone she meets. Donna will be missed more than you'll ever realize. The impact you've had on our school and our students, and each of us is immeasurable. Summersworth Middle School will never quite be the same without you, and we're all a little bit better for have had the privilege of working alongside you. We wish you nothing but the best in your retirement. You've earned it, and then some. People like you are rare, and everyone needs a Donna in their life and in their school. Enjoy this next chapter, and know that you'll always have a place here with us at SMS. Congratulations, Donna, and thank you for everything.
Thank you, Donna, and thanks to Mark in his absence. So again, it's about 100, almost 150 years of service to Summersworth, which is pretty special. And I'll echo what everybody said that should be pretty apparent to everybody in the audience tonight and everybody at home. If you would like to substitute in the Summersworth schools, you're welcome to. Thank you to all of our retirees. The board's probably going to say, yeah, but really, it's been an honor. I am humbled and honored to be working in this district and working with all of you. And thank you for your years of service. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And since there's such a big group here, we do have kind of a section. No pressure, but if anyone would like to come up to the microphone to say a few words, you're in 4K, and it'll be forever. You are welcome to. You can think about it. I'm sure the school board's going to say just a couple of words. I will be very simple in my statements, because Ms. Coco had the emotional one, and I'll pull it together. I've said this before, but I really, my wish for everyone is that what you've put in for care and love and patience and just really changing lives come back to you tenfold, to you and your family. I think that being in this profession and being with students and being just such dedicated, loving human beings that we're so grateful for as a community, there's no words other than I hope it comes to you time and time again, and comes to you and your family and your loved ones in your retirement and in your life. You don't have to retire for that, but I hopefully you'll feel that effect being outside of the schools. All right, boards, board members? Yep.
I'm just, you know, hearing everything about every retiree. One, I am just in awe of all of your service. As an educator myself, I can't even imagine the day where I get to retire. But, you know, with what you've given to your school, it makes this community better. And as a member of Summersworth in a different school, right, like in a private school, it makes my community better too, because it makes our profession better. And so I just know, like, the friends that I've had retire, the mentors I've had retire, how much they meant to my schools that I've worked at and my community, and how much you've meant to Summersworth and what you've given to our community. I'm just so appreciative, and thank you for being wonderful mentors of accomplished educators in all sorts of roles for our students and our town, so.
I wanted to say thank you so much for everything that you've done, for all of the students, working with the staff. I mean, there's a lot of years here put in Summersworth, and that's huge. So thank you for everything you've done for everybody. Thank you.
I'll keep it simple. Thank you for touching the future and leaving such wonderful memories.
I'll just add that I'm extremely grateful that Summersworth has such a strong community of teachers and faculty that stay through their retirement. I think it's really awesome, and we're really thankful for it.
Great, thank you. Before your, oh, yep.
Yeah, just on behalf of the city council as well, just thank you so much for all of your years of dedication and for bringing up the next generation of hilltoppers. It's been really, really wonderful just to get to know you a little bit better by hearing these beautiful words, and thank you so much.
Before we dismiss you, would anyone like to say anything else? We do have time. It's only 7:34. No pressure. You're welcome anytime to say anything else or anything else. But with that, oh, yes, yeah, picture? Okay. All right, before we go, let's get a picture of all the retirees up here. Yeah, please come on up. Yep, yep, yep. Come on up. Who has a good, who has a good camera to take?
We have a good摄像机.
Yeah?
Where do we stand? Where does this stand?
Well, where should we do it?
Right here, right?
Yes, right here. I'll get out of the way.
Yep.
Push in a little. You're the photographer.
You are all welcome to stay, but you may want to leave, and that's, we won't take any offense of that. But one more round of applause. We're so grateful. Thank you, everyone.
Look at the little boy. He's dancing, and he's like, watch, I'm going to see myself on the TV.
Oh, he's watching.
He was looking at the TV. He's like, wait, do I see my show on the TV? He's looking for himself on there. So cute.
Maybe, maybe. wait, I should wait a little bit more, yeah. All right. We'll actually have a real comments by visitors. If there's any comments by visitors, another shot. I've been trying, but I don't see any comments by board members at this time. We'll have another chance. Good night. Agenda item number three, our consent calendar. What's the wish? Is your microphone on?
Motion to accept consent calendar.
Consent calendar as presented.
As presented.
Second. All right, any discussion about any items? It's the Summersworth School Board meeting minutes, Negotiation Personnel Committee meeting minutes, and Policy Committee meeting minutes. These are all in our agenda, and they're all for public. They are all on the website for public view. All in favor of adopting the consent calendar, say aye. Aye, wonderful. All right, moving to our reports, our student representative report. Thank you, Nina, for being so patient. Take it away.
Okay, so a few things from the high school. A reminder that Summersworth High School will hold our graduation ceremony on Friday, June 6th at 7:00 PM. I mean, at 6:00 PM. Don't go at 7:00. 6:00 PM at the UNH White Moore Center. This event is open to the entire community, and we hope to see many faculties, staff, and family there. There are many other events and activities in May and June to celebrate the end of the year in the class of 2025, including a senior banquet and a parade of graduates through our schools. Seniors' last day of school is Monday, June 2nd. Last weekend, the Summersworth Drama Club held their annual SNL, Summersworth Night Live. This variety show-style productions include skits and musical performances from many different groups and organizations. The Chamber of Commerce sponsored a new networking event for our current IB marketing class. Students will be able to meet with Commerce members and talk about SHS CTE programs and opportunities. Last Thursday, the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard sponsored a pop-up event at Summersworth High School. Students were explored to different programs and careers, career opportunities, and heard about what it is like to work at the shipyard. Highlights include rope throwing, welding, and learning about magnetism in electrical... No. And then a few things at Idlehurst is the Idlehurst Universal Team has began their End Strong Challenge for the last five weeks of school. This is an opportunity for staff and admin to acknowledge all the students' hard work over the course of the years and to give special acknowledgements throughout the next five weeks. The first week, teachers and Ms. Coco wrote over 100 personalized notes to acknowledge students' positive behaviors. One week, Teacher's Choice, Most Creative, Biggest Cheerleader, Most Improved, 3BS Award, and Kinder Than You Need To Be Award. Another week, students will have time to choose the Student Choice Award. The qualifications are Kind, Helpful, Thoughtful, Positive, Bucket Fellers, First-Time Listeners. These students will have special lunch on Wednesday of this week to be honored. These are some dates that are like important. So June 3rd, we will be welcoming this year's seniors' class for our annual graduation parade. June 5th, all kindergartners will be taking a field trip to the Newcastle State Park. June 10th, IES Field Trip. June 12th, our summer reading kickoff. Stay tuned for more details. And then June 13th, K-12 Step Up Day. June 13th, pre-K graduation. June 16th, kindergarten celebration. And we look forward to a great end of the school year. Please contact Idlehurst with any questions if you have any.
Thank you so much, and I look forward to the student school board reps at our next meeting, June 10th, running the show. So Nina, you just pick a seat, and you set Natalia Will as well, and hopefully Thomas Reese isn't totally out of here. Thomas, show up. Come to the meeting. You're not done yet. Thank you so much, and you are excused. Yeah, all right. All right, our superintendent's report, Agenda Item 4.2.
Thank you, Nina. Nina overlapped with a few of my things. I'm just going to provide one update, which is important and timely for today. The proposed collective bargaining agreement between the district and CESP, our Facilities and Custodial Group, which the Custodians and Facilities Group had ratified and the school board approved at our last meeting, went to the city council both non-public and then city council meeting, and we had some very good discussion just about where we are right now, and a lot of support from the city council about taking care of our Custodial and Facilities Group. But because of, what we basically asked for was a corrective move in the second and third years of this contract, the city council was not able to ratify the contract as we proposed it, particularly out of concern for where we're headed, federal funding, state funding, economy concerns. We had a good negotiation meeting. We came back to the drawing board, good negotiation meeting with the CESP negotiating team, Vice Chair Clark and I representing the district. And we have came up with a new agreement at the negotiating table, tentatively signed off on CESP, approved it the next day, which was last Friday, and the Personnel and Negotiations Committee earlier this evening also approved to send it to the school board. So we'll be looking at it in non-public and then bringing it to the city council as expediently as possible. And that's it for tonight. Thank you.
All right. Our business and administrators report. Katie, thank you.
The budget updates in your packet. Since the last update, we went through all the open purchase orders that we have through the end of the year and calculated out what we were going to need through the end of the year, and we were able to adjust some accumbrances that we had, and particularly the area of special education for contracted services and transportation. So we were able to release some funds. I'm still forecasting some estimates, utilities, substitutes, salaries, still for some open positions, which I'm going to release, and that, you know, we're nearing the end of the year. So in the next few weeks, we're going to start to receive our final June invoices. We'll be paying out staff salaries, year-end stipends, all of those things. So at that time, I'll really be able to firm up the estimates and see where we are for the end of the year. If we are still where we are at this point, at the June 10th meeting, I'll provide another update. I typically don't do it till the second meeting, but I know June's a little bit busy, so I'm going to do it in the first meeting in June, and we'll bring a list of possible expenditures that we might want to use through the end of the year if we still have these available funds. But just note also, we do have to set aside the $200,000 for the budget for next year, so. In terms of revenue, we received our last scheduled adequacy payment, as well as our indirect cost payments and our preschool monthly payments. Also on the update, I gave you an update on technology for Phase 2. As you are aware, NewView had conducted a review of our infrastructure and put together a plan to upgrade and replace our outdated networking hardware. The board approved last summer a Phase 1 of the upgrade, which was completed, and this spring and summer, Phase 2 is going to be completed. The impact of Phase 2 will be strong wireless for both coverage and capacity for the next eight years. The equipment that NewView is proposing is enterprise-grade, which is intended for use of high-traffic, dense device campuses, and utilizes the newest wireless technology available. In March, the board approved One Source as our vendor. We had to go out for E-Rate, and we had to approve our vendor, so the board approved that in March. We sent the project to E-Rate, and we're awaiting our approval. They will approve reimbursement for 60% of the cost of the equipment for this project. So the board has already approved the funds for this project. They was utilized of our additional adequacy funds from last, in the fall, so we had approved So I put a breakdown of the project below. So the total cost that was submitted to E-Rate for just the equipment was $305,375.10. The labor for the project is $60,000, so that brings the total project cost to $365,375.10. E-Rate will reimburse the district 60% of the cost of the equipment, not the labor, so we will get a reimbursement of $183,225.06, which brings the net project cost to $182,150.04. So we are happy to report that that did come in under budget by like $9,500. We do plan on using the remaining $9,500 to buy any required supplies as we get the project going, such as patch panels, ethernet cable, and things like that. So I wanted to give an update to the board on that project. So that'll be happening this spring and into the summer. And then I have two food service items. One is on the agenda later on, and I did hand out a memo to you at the beginning of the meeting. Each year, you have to approve the contract renewal with fresh picks, as well as set our meal prices for the next year. So I gave you the memo. I'll go into the memo in detail when we get to the agenda item, but so I won't go into too much detail at this point, but I'll be looking for the board to approve the renewal with fresh picks for the contract, as well as set meal prices.
Yeah, and I think just because we have a slim board tonight, that we can wait until June 10th.
Yes, I did put it, I put in the end of the memo that, and because of the lateness, I want you guys to have time to discuss it and read about it. We can vote at it at the next meeting. And then we did apply for a food service equipment grant, I should say grant. The USD released a request for proposals for equipment. It's, the primary purpose is to improve nutrition impact and the quality of school meals, or to replace existing aging equipment in the district. So it's a competitive grant, and there's a maximum of $6,000 per school. So I met with Jay and Liza Press, our food service director, and we did create three proposals, one for Idlehurst, one for Maplewood, and one for the high school, to replace a convection steamer at Idlehurst, a reach-in freezer at Maplewood, and a reach-in refrigerator at the high school. So those have been submitted, and we're waiting to hear back, so hopefully we receive those. And that's all I have.
Wonderful, okay. Any questions or clarity? I do have just four, and I had this, aside from the technology update, but I'm just hearing from the community of potentially getting updated laptops for our students, getting updated the infamous cart, whatever that is. So I think going forward, when we do have that, just to have good functioning laptops with all the keys and all that, I think that's kind of in the community's mind, and if we do have any amount, I know it's not an immense expense, I think more of the vision is how we maintain our technology going forward, which we've done an incredible job in the last year or two, kind of going down that path, but I think that will be my kind of request, is let's get these, let's get these students there. And it's just more of the key list, I wish our student representative here, you know, just let's get the kids some great laptops for next semester. But we'll do that at June 10th. Anything else from the board, questions? All right, all right, our city council update. Councilor Parity Catanzaro.
Yeah, just a couple of updates from the city. For folks who were excited a year-plus ago when we got the crosswalk approved on the side that everybody most wants to cross, right downtown here, that's High Street on the other side of Poppy Seed, sort of across from, yep, it's right at the end of Highland going into Constitutional across High Street there. We, there were some delays in that contractor, and so we approved at our last meeting, moving that to a different contractor who said that they could do it in a pretty timely manner. A lot of people will notice that Constitutional Way right now is blocked off. That's the paving project on that street is, the Complete Streets Project is coming to a close, and I'm excited to see that crosswalk in there soon. Number two was, I know a lot of people that go to the schools also use our library, our awesome library. We have right before our next city council meeting, Monday, June 2nd, our regular meeting is at 7:00, but at 6:00 PM, we have the Placework Architects coming to present their presentation that they've been working on for what the library expansion could look like. Among other things, it's addressing ADA and other renovations and improvements to the library building. So it's going to be really exciting if people are interested in tuning in. That's at 6:00 PM on Monday, June 2nd. And finally, it's not late-breaking news at all, but for people who don't watch all the council meetings, we do have a new city manager starting in early July. Our longtime city manager, Bob Bellmore, is retiring at the end of June, so just in line with the theme. line with the theme of retirements today. We have that switch coming up, and our new city manager is awesome. I believe the paper did a really good feature on him, but he comes with a lot of great experiences, town administrator in Stratum, deputy city manager in Portsmouth, just great vision for the city, really empathetic and smart guy, so I'm excited about that as well.
Absolutely, as long as they're relevant.
No, my question is with the library improvements, do you have, and not to put you on the spot, just the children's room. I know the, you know, like it's downstairs, and it's hard to monitor, and just, what are the proposed, do you know yet?
I haven't seen the actual proposal yet, but one of the biggest drivers of this, and one of the main points, we want it, you know, more accessible to ADA folks, people with strollers and all of that, so it's expanding that first level, and much of that is the children's room, because, you know, currently it's in the basement, there are no windows. It's, yeah, it's terrible, so it's bringing that out and kind of expanding a little bit over from the current footprint of the building, was last I knew. But I know that that was one of the really big focuses, is bringing the children's room upstairs into the light surrounded by windows, so I think it's going to be awesome.
And that's kind of our beginning. I know it's not our school, but it is such a phenomenal first step for kids to start the process, and I know we've worked with it, and our library director, Tanya Days, has done a phenomenal job, so I think that there's like a very strong connection between early literacy, our Summersworth ready together, getting ready for kindergarten, and getting those playgroups and reading groups. I remember parents really were wanting that lift and that community connection, so I'm so happy to hear. I'll put it in my calendar.
Yeah, the programming there is always like at capacity, sold out. It's just a lot of good stuff happening there.
It's great, thank you so much. All right, moving on to committee reports, we do not have many. I think we, yeah, do we have one for Bill and Greg?
So with ed programs, I spoke with Kat and also with Bridgette. So we've decided that there doesn't seem to be much left for the school year to tackle on that one, so we're going to, no additional meetings for this whole year.
Okay, got it, yeah. That's not on, yeah, we're not on here anyways. I think the only update was the Personnel and Negotiations Committee, which met earlier today about the custodial CESA contract, in that we'll get into that kind of in non-public to be able to discuss in non-public, as it is a non-public item negotiation. Policy, there is, there is an update for policy, and I think that will be it.
The only update I just wanted to offer is that the meeting minutes that we just approved early on by consent were to review and revise all of the policies that are under first reading. And so that was our May 21st meeting.
Okay.
And we don't have any others scheduled, because we are running, if we had a policy committee meeting, we would be preparing for the fall.
Yeah.
And so with the legislature still working on various statutes, there may be some policy changes. We met before this school board meeting as a group with the New Hampshire School Board Association, and they're keeping the pulse on the legislation that's coming, and there's a lot of changes that would impact our policy, policies. So stay tuned in the fall, there will be more work to be done, and I just, a shout-out to our committee members, because they tow a lot, and it's just, you know, a lot of work they shoulder, and it just helps for a efficient progress, so thank you very much.
Yeah, but yeah, thank you. So we'll just have the first reads and second reads for adoption today, and many of these, if not all, are required by law. Yep, okay. All right. All right, special ed ad hoc, there's none, so our 6.1, our reset direction forward update on preliminary work in the world today.
I'm not going to, there's two handouts, but I'm not going to give them to you yet, because you will look at them and not listen to me. So by way of reminder and introductory, in the summer last year, we had a school board retreat, actually in two parts. We had an administrative retreat during the summer as well. I am not a big fan of new superintendent, let's do everything different, but what was pretty clear to me in the spring, when I was visiting schools and being hired, and through the process of getting acclimated and getting settled in the summer, was that after a great recession leading into political polarization and heightened wars against public education, followed by a COVID pandemic, followed by several years of disruptive district leadership, including a difficult year a couple of years ago and an interim year last year, that there needed to be a bit of a reset and a discussion. I had lots of conversations, particularly with school leaders, about why we're educating kids, and what our mission was, and how we were guided. And although there were pockets of things happening within schools largely about day-to-day values more than purpose of education, there wasn't any sense of this is who we are, and this is why we do it, and we know it, and it guides our practice day-to-day. This was part of our discussion in the two-part board retreat over the summer. I proposed that we probably need a better definition, and at this point, we didn't know how the November election would go, either at the state level or the federal level. By November, we knew both how the state election and the federal election went, and it wasn't until January that we knew what the implications of both the state election and the federal election were. So there's been a lot happening around us as we move forward. But the discussion over the summer was about resetting and rethinking and making sure we have a tight, tangible, bold, clear sense of mission and values, which is obviously in school board domain to determine and to settle on. I brought forth ideas then. I also suggested that what you measure is what's most important, and what is most important is what you need to measure, and that we can't have hundreds of things that we're looking at, and we're very weak on data systems, and that's one of the things that we need to improve. Can we tighten up what the most important measures are? And suggested maybe that working together, we could have a school board-approved strategic plan maybe by the middle of the coming school year. Most everything is happening much slower than anticipated, because we are at capacity. And you can spend, I want to be really clear about a bias here, because I can be challenged on this as we move forward. You can spend $5,000 to $10,000 on a strategic plan. You can spend $50,000 on a strategic plan, and a fair number of educators you talk to will tell you they've been through this process, and it's time-consuming, and it's expensive, and then it produces a document, they have no recollection of what was in it or where it is now, that looks nice at the time. It can be done well. I happen to believe that a properly-paid superintendent, assistant superintendent, business administrator, and school leadership team are the individuals that you're already paying to push and direct and support the board in making these decisions. So coming, just by reminder of process, coming out of the summer work, and both with the school board and the admin team, my hope was to come back to the school board sometime in the fall with, hey, we've been playing around with these ideas some more, here's where we are, what do you think? That late-fall thing turned into April and May. And for, looking at the high school, for example, and our union reps at Lesferon, you know, the accreditation process there, a limited amount of PD days, we squeezed in, shoehorned, squeezed in what we could. I'd also suggest that a lot of folks say, especially first-year superintendent, first-year assistant superintendent, luckily have a business administrator who's an alum and a veteran, don't do anything in your first year, just drive the bus. There's too much urgency here for that. There was just no, that to me would have been just unethical. So we dove in as we thought was manageable and tried to take some steps forward. We had some administrative team, and for those that aren't familiar, that's basically the central office team combined, the central office professional staff combined with the principals and assistant principals, athletic director, facilities director, sixteen of us all together. We, three different times, have spent significant amounts of time on this. I had three community forums in the fall, all of them poorly attended, which is partly bad advertising on my part, but I think we had a really well-attended one in the spring, particularly around the budget, but we talked about bigger-picture issues as well. And I've collected about a dozen names of community members and parents that want to be involved and engaged in this process, that we can hopefully get meaningfully engaged as we move forward. Twice, we've used full district meetings on PD days to talk about mission, values, priorities, and the beginnings of strategic plan to bring to the board. We had a survey in December. We give everybody an opportunity to assess where we were, that was immensely helpful. We had school-level discussions that Assistant Superintendent Crosby and I led after one of our workshops in February, so we were working in a more meaningful way, squeezed in with other PD priorities at each of the schools. We came back to the administrative team again, and we're now doing surveys with the staff on some of the revised drafts to make sure that their voices are heard. I do want to be really clear, especially for folks, we had a lot of thoughtful participation. There's a risk in creating a document that says anything anybody suggests goes in the document, and then you end up with 27 pages of mush that's hard to act on. So we had good, hard conversations about all of this, and we tried to keep it tight, and we tried to make sure everybody was heard. So we're in the midst now of having both a revised draft of sorts of a mission, values statement, and what we're about at its core, which I will share with you in a second. And we were getting a lot of feedback from the faculty and staff, one last go-around. I think we had about 100-plus participants in the survey last go-around, and the same with measures and outcomes. It's my hope moving forward that we bring this to the board, we bring this to the board retreat, and we figure out next steps through the summer, and I hope it doesn't go too far, but we need to get the community engaged. The board has to own it, we all need to own it. But I think you're starting from a pretty good place with district leadership team and school leadership team that have looked hard at this. And it isn't to say there aren't some good things happening within the schools. The middle school, for example, has some value statements and how kids work together every day and how they strive every day. It's a little bit different than why are we here and why are we educating kids, but there's a lot of good stuff happening, but not the glue to hold it all together. With a tightness and boldness that I think is required, given where we are today, which is essentially universal public education as we know it, and Summersworth and other places in New Hampshire is gravely threatened. My hope would be that with a tight mission and value statement approved by the board, owned by the community, owned by the school district, and clear measures that we start to really own and everybody's familiar with and communicate well, and maybe a key strategic plan developed, I would hope maybe by November, December of this coming school year at the latest, or January, February, March, sorry, at the earliest, January, February, March at the latest, we go into budget season, which means trying to bring in some grants, if we do come out with something tight and bold, given that we are a community with needs and a community with a strong leadership team and a community with a strong board. I am hopeful, not $5,000 and $10,000 grants, but $100,000-plus grants to kind of support our work moving forward. So we're already in year three from when this process began, because that plays out the year after the one coming. So there's a need, in my opinion, to move quickly. What's happening at the federal level, what's happening at the state level, I would argue these things need to anchor you at any point, but particularly in difficult times, but in any kind of times, whatever. Even administrations at the federal and state level that any particular school board or school leaders would find politically in line with are still just state and federal. The end of the day, this is our school district to lead and to move forward as makes sense to us. So, sure, I got our school board retreat this summer. The things I'm going to pass around, there's a couple out there. I think many of the school board members are on the all-staff email, so you would have seen all these already, but if you get this pair and this, and then it's two, a pair of documents, I just want to show you what's in front of you, and then take no more than three or four more minutes. Thank you, Sarah, for puzzling that out. In the interest of time, I would tell you what, because you've seen similar, what I'll do is, you have each of these in front of you, a lot of work has gone into these drafts, the primary goal strands, development of four critical sales. This is clearly the domain of the school board to own and to improve and to shape, and how this moves forward next, and at what pace comes to the school board. The core measures piece, I would argue, is probably, as we talked about in our workshop today, is as much of a shared responsibility as any, what we choose to put, you know, it's hard to argue with it, but it just really tightens up what matters most and how we measure it. The piece that's going out to the school district staff and personnel probably tomorrow, I'd originally told them they'd get it by Tuesday, which probably means that they've learned that's means by Thursday, the way things have been rolling out, but I would like to say a little bit about that, just to give you an idea. Whereas a, you know, whereas the first two documents I gave you are kind of in draft condition, the plan is by no means in any condition. It is just elements and ideas that we're beginning to piece together, that we will need to figure out a vehicle, a school board slash administrative team, whether that's a particular committee to focus on strategic planning, or direction forward, or based in a committee that will probably do nothing but this from now through, you know, fall or spring. But I just want to give you a sample. This is going to be about a five-page document, and I think I'm just, I was going to do the document and the survey, and I realized I just need to put the document in the survey so faculty and staff can kind of go through it and respond with, this doesn't make any sense to me, this should be our number-one priority, what are we missing? So it'll just take it that much further along as it comes to the school board. There's about 20 components to it at the moment, and I just want to give you an example of a few. Having an external, valid, reliable assessment system that is ours, not state, federal-driven, that changes every three to five years, and is sometimes helpful and is sometimes not helpful at all, our assistant superintendent, Kat Crosby, has been working with school leaders and a team of staff. This is one of the things that arguably could have been in this strategic plan that we develop in the middle of next year, but we said, no, this is one thing we need to move on immediately. It's not on either of these two documents, this is the third document coming next. So just to give you an idea, so that's important, that we're already moving on that, and we're probably going to have a decision by the end of this month. Tech has been talked about a lot. That's going to be in the strategic plan, second thing I want to mention. Three elements to this. Number one was getting the foundational systems, you know, the Wi-Fi works, the servers work, the backup work, that is the work we've already undertaken. So half of that work was already started, the other half will be up in the spring, that's what NewView has undertaken. That ship began before, that train left the station before I got here. That's the first level. The second level you just referred to, Chair Larson, is the devices for kids. So we get the system in place, but we need devices in the hands, projectors, devices of all sorts, in the hands of our students, in the hands of our kids that are effective, that have keyboards, and so that's the second level. We were hoping to be moving on that, you know, this last budget season, until this last budget season happened to us. And that kind of, there's nothing in the budget for any of that, we're just trying to squeeze out what we can. But that's the next priority. The third and last priority, which this committee, another committee that Kat Crosby's already been working with on teaching and learning and technology, is what do we do with these devices in this system? How do we use it in productive ways and effective ways that actually increases better learning and better teaching? Third thing, just to give you a, this is all coming, but I just want to give you an idea where we are. Third, the measures piece that you have in front of you, but we don't have data systems. Probably in my first few weeks, the number of times I went to Katie, who knows everything about this district, what can you, you know, I just want to see the average daily attendance today at each of the schools. That should just be on my desk, or that should be just, we're not there yet, and we're getting there. Everything takes a little bit of an endeavor. How are we doing, you know, with staff and faculty, health and attendance as well? Where are we, the survey data that's, that we really need to make part of the fabric of our district is coming, so that's, that's big. Curriculum instruction assessment is going to be the first thing on the list. We need a home base for our curriculum, and we need a common framework and a common language for our curriculum from pre-K all the way through high school graduation. We've already made a lot of progress on that, and then we got to fill in all the holes that don't exist, that aren't, that aren't things that are missing right now. But, and I'm going to stop in a second, but in, how do you begin to talk about what's missing in curriculum when alls you have to guide you are the minimum state standards? And you have debates at the state level about whether or not we should be teaching an hour on the evils of communism as part of the high school curriculum? We're in the weeds, there's no leadership coming from the state, and that's not a knock on the current administration or the current Department of Education. It's always been a support and a basic minimum standards function. Why are we educating our kids is missing. It's not in our current mission statement, it's not in our current school mission statements, it's not in our current school mission statements. It's not coming from the state. It's not coming from the feds. And if you don't have that in place, you're just sort of tweaking around the edges. Hey, this seems like a nice idea. This seems like a nice, let's do this. The state legislature, the volunteer state legislature now, legislature now says we need to do X, Y, and Z. We need to follow the state minimum standards, but we also need to challenge them when they're out of line with where we're headed. And there's going to be a lot more of that happening in the days and years ahead. Personnel, HR systems, talked about this with this couple of school board members earlier in the year, just to have everything that's related to school board policies, collective bargaining agreements, contracts, New Hampshire law, and federal labor law all in one place so that we are efficiently meeting all of those requirements and taking care of those things pretty well. An absolute given, in my opinion, somewhere way near the top of this list is going to be a strategic direction. This is one that Summersworth is already on, but we need to really strategize how we spend resources on it. Birth, not pre-K to high school graduation, but birth, or better yet, pregnancy through high school graduation, everything that happens before kids get to pre-K, everything that happens during the summers, everything that happens during the breaks, all the way through high school, wraparound services, health and human services, recreation, athletics, everything, something that Summersworth is very good at, and there's already lots of pieces in there. It needs to probably be way at the top of this. And another thing that came up in our school board workshop earlier, and the last thing I'll say, is public relations and marketing. Our website is terrible. Nobody goes to our website and says, wow, I want to go. You know, if somebody's got a young family and they're deciding where to live in this area, with integrity, I'm not talking about marketing ahead of substance, but let's get the substance right, and let's make sure that we have a website that has all the information on it as easy to navigate, but is powerful, that includes a photo of our recent graduates, you know, and everything that's happening, where students are going, all the things that are doing, but just kind of like a, you know, and a tight brochure around all those things. We're woefully behind on all that, and we're bleeding kids to homeschool and to other options. That's one of the things we need to track better. So, that was a lot. In summary, so you've got a lot of preliminary work that went on, went into the missions value statement. It's now coming to the Board with additional feedback to figure out how we move forward with it, how we make sure the community fully owns this and figure out what the Board wants to do with it. You have the core measures coming to you, and probably, and that's, you know, the draft you have in front of you. The next thing, which will be before the end of the school year, will be a very preliminary, rough, here's what your district leadership thinks, here's some feedback from the staff about priorities and direction forward. I most recently had a good conversation with the Assistant Superintendent about this. It's going to be a lot, but we're giving it all to you, because it should, it needs to all be in front of us, because then we can prioritize. It shouldn't be like, okay, I thought these were the three things we're going to do, and everything's going to be great. Now, you've got four more things. No, we're going to put it all out there and figure out how to prioritize. And I would like to bring in, you know, several hundred thousand dollars in grants at a time when not many foundations are making gifts to fix education. There was an interesting editorial a few days ago about how it seems America has given up on education. It's no longer talked about at the level it once was 15, 20, 25, 30, 35 years ago, about supporting it, innovating it, getting it right. And the bad part is that means they're not focused on it. The good part means there isn't as much competition for those dollars as there might have been 20 or 30 years ago. And I think this is a pretty power, I think the same way ACLU connected with Summersworth around punching up on the concerns about what was the Dear Colleague letter and the compliance statement that came out and the executive order, I think we're in a good place to maybe find some resources and do some powerfully good stuff.
And that's why you're here.
And, sorry, that was a lot.
Easy.
Yeah, I just wanted to get, but I think it was good just to kind of get caught up on that. And all of that I had hoped would be to you by Christmas. But it's all pretty good that we got to where we are, thanks to the staff, district leadership we have, thanks to the teachers that stepped in. It's been pretty powerful.
So, any kind of, yes. Board Member Brown, yes.
Question. One's a practical thing. I have two pieces of paper, but you said that there was a third page?
The third part is going to be about five pages. That's coming.
Oh, okay. So, I don't, okay, I don't, okay.
Yeah. But I just want to stress, there's three pieces to the work we've been doing, and you have two pieces in front of you, and the third's coming, and the third's bigger. And the third will be most preliminary.
Okay. So, then, being on school board, we get a lot of presentations on matrix and measures and that each school is doing. How is that integrated in what you've put forth here? I mean, I'm just not seeing any of, you know, the key words, phrases on some of these tracking things that we get presentations on. So, how did that reflect in here?
Meaning actual data from this school year that's in front of you, or how we'll track it going forward?
There, and I, it's a loss for me right now to remember on some of the programs that people in, like, the elementary school are using to measure.
Yeah, it's number three on the measures.
Core measures.
Learning.
Three.
And that'll be our new standardized testing system. We'll be at the center of it, but we'll look at additional testing.
Yeah, this wasn't standardized testing, and I'm at a loss as to what it was, but I'm just, okay, so I just, I was looking for that, and that was my question. Thanks.
Was it the, are you thinking of the reading data, for example, that we were presented with, or something different?
There were, there was a whole list of matrices, that, in particular, the elementary school was measuring. And yes, it was reading preparedness, but it also dealt with conduct.
Yep.
It was very holistic, and that was, you know, an intentional effort to measure those. And so, with that effort, and I, you know, I welcome reassessments, but I also want to make sure we're not reinventing the wheel or casting out what.
The PBIS is in, number-two culture has the behaviors, so we're going to track things better by survey, but it's got PBIS already built in there. So, a lot of the red zone, yellow zone, green zone, and the tier one, two, three, yes, we will build on that and keep that.
Okay.
And student, and I would like to think the school board should probably be at a place, not to mention the superintendent, with knowing exactly where we are on, what's today, May 27th? May 27th, where are we today on suspensions, out-of-school suspensions versus last year, the year before, and the year before that? I don't know that answer. I track it day-to-day, but, you know, that's an example of, so, out-of-school suspensions will be tracked, PBIS, all that data will be tracked, and the survey stuff's in there. Arguably, learning should be first on the list, but I kind of look at showing up as first on the list. School culture is foundational, and then learning is what happens next, and then, you know, matriculation data is third, I'm sorry, fourth on the list, the final thing.
Okay, Sarah.
But there's, we're not, we're not redoing things that already exist.
So, just if I have a, so to clarify, this document and this core measures going forward and the additional five pages is intended to unify the district under one plan, taking into account things that have already been happening, but give a good idea of the data that we already have and also increase our information?
The data that we already have is not well-organized and well-utilized across the district, but it's there. So, there's lots of stuff to build on, but it should be tight and systemic and clear. So, there's some pieces that are missing, and not a reflection of anybody that's in the district. A lot of good people working their tails off, doing really good stuff, and pockets of it. But if you take your school presentations as an example, you saw a host of kind of different data and things that were presented. I think we, three or four years from now, there'll probably be some universal stuff that is kind of built in, reading, writing, math skills, suspensions, PBIS data that are reflected. And then the school can also say, but let's talk about this reading program and some of the things that we've had that are foundational, but some stuff that's kind of universally understood to be at the top of the list.
Yep. So, like, a universal idea of what is, okay, yes, thank you.
That makes sense.
Yes, makes, absolutely, yes.
This is a lot for, like, for now, right? And I am, you know, I want to be mindful of our board members that aren't here, but if we can get this information out, John, to, like, as a part of our packet, these two, so, you know, we can all see, I think we've, it was, there is an email, but that it's all, like, kind of findable. I think our next steps and welcome feedback is kind of, we do have a board retreat, but kind of the group, and I feel like this is an all-hands kind of group, to be at the helm, to be, to be the ones that can answer, right? This is what's happening, kind of be able to, like, be in the, in-depth in information. And with the in-depth and information, the system and how to use devices in my other world of how AI, whatever that will be called, how that will have an effect, if we don't speak about it, I'm going to continue to speak about it, because it's, it's going to be more influential than we'll ever really, than we really can understand at this point. But I understand enough that that is it. So, something is more intelligent and more, and is more capable of many things that is widespread. So, I feel like that also should be at the helm in some way, because if it isn't, I don't think we're really being mindful of actually the world around us. Yeah.
Sorry for another question. With this, and I was looking at Katie, because she mentioned the NewView contract, and I just, I thought we had a handle on data, because, you know, we've gotten reports on suspensions and, you know, attendance in the past, and I guess I didn't understand just how difficult it was to pull that information. But that, to me, seems to be a software and a technology upgrade. Is that something that, and I just, I guess this is a question for Katie.
Budget.
With what we're do, you know, with this mission statement and tracking and data, do we have the, a plan for, like, you know, a capital improvement plan on that next level of NewView or whoever it is supporting that? That's, you know, question. Okay, thank you. Sure.
Discuss this with NewView, and Stephanie Lefrenier, who's our Director of Grants and Development, has tackled an immense amount of this this year. She's kind of in our go-to toolbox person that's kind of stepping in a lot of places to kind of begin to figure out what that system. We weren't considering this to be a CIP major investment. We were looking at this as to building in some routines, getting our infrastructure up to speed, which we did half of already. We're going to do the second half of next. And this is not a device issue, because the devices we're talking about here are the school administrators, and we're good on that. We need to do better on what our teachers and our students have. But this is something I would hope we could have done by middle of next school year or sooner, just with some hard work and committing to what these steps are in order to be generating what reports and how often, and to make them routine. It's not that hard, in my opinion.
Sorry. It sounds like it's more of a, like, who has the data? Where is the data? How can we coordinate the data? Like, we do a lot of data collection. Like, the software is a thing, right? But like, reporting out that data and making sure we're following those procedures, and it sounds like this is more about that, like, having the infrastructure of people to support the communication of that data.
I agree. I think if we came in, and this was the only thing that needed to be done, it would have been done by September, but it wasn't. I think a lot of it's tied together.
All right. Some time to digest this and go forward. I mean, we only have a school, one more school board meeting left, but I think this will probably be worked on throughout the summer, and we'll kind of figure out our role within it, our representation, and come back. It's a lot for now, but, yeah.
I could have for the June 10th board meeting, I'll put it in the packet, you'll get the two things that I handed out today. I'll also be able to attach just feedback in summary form that came from the district folks that participated in the survey, so you kind of have a sense of where the district stands on that, but I'll leave the documents as they are. And I'll give you the preliminary rough version of the 20-some-odd elements of things that we're kind of looking at for potential elements of a plan moving forward. So, you have all of that at June 10th, and then if the Board chooses, it could be the entire retreat focus to figure out what this all is, digesting it, and figuring out a path forward, because none of it's approved. It's all in draft form at this point, if that makes sense to the Board.
Yes. Yes. Light work, as the kids say. This is a lot. Thank you. Just moving through for this meeting, and again, with respect to the folks not being here. I will ask, you know, kind of communicate, well, we'll look at the late-June retreat, and then kind of more of a community, as we mentioned earlier, more outreach to the community. Sometimes it's tough, but also wherever you are, or baseball game, wherever to go is to kind of represent your people. So, I encourage board members to engage with folks. I guess that's what I'm saying, in a simple form. Engage with people. Make a friend. I made two friends today, just before. Yes, of course.
We had discussed this earlier at almost, would there be potential interest in a board-hosted or district leadership-hosted or co-hosted community forum, either on June 10th before the school board meeting, doesn't mean every school board member has to be present, or on Wednesday, June 11th? And if there's a general nod of, because we're still enough time out that we could do that, it would be an opportunity to introduce to the community that turns out, and for me to get back to the dozen or so people that are like, hey, let me know how I can get involved, let me know how I can get involved, to introduce the preliminary work on mission values, key skills, to introduce the preliminary work on the key outcomes, and to introduce kind of the draft elements of things people might want to work on, so they have a chance to kind of engage in it in some way or another. And I don't know if 10 people will turn out, or 100, 100 turns out when you're talking about budgets. We could make something up and say, this is a budget meeting, and we're going to cut all athletic programs.
Yeah, that would be good face stuff, yeah. Yes, let's, I don't have, yeah, I would, I would, I would open the, every, every board meeting could be kind of something similar to that. I know we do Robert's Rules, but let me.
No, I feel like Leslie Knope in The Office, like, a community forum.
Yes, yeah, yeah. I think those are, those are great. I think it's more of the invite.
Yeah, it's a lot, there's a lot of value to, and just being able to have, like, a workshop before a meeting that's recorded and televised, and we have a link to, so that when people are like, what's this thing you're talking about?
As long as we can get the information to them beforehand, so they can, like, look and digest, what do we have, 30 seconds or 10 seconds of digestion material? You know, it's not.
Information about infographics.
Yeah, something that they can get beforehand. If that's enough time to get it to them beforehand, so they can know what to speak to, yeah, I'm absolutely fine with that. We can work on that beforehand. Okay. Yeah, yeah, okay. All right. Do I have a motion to read these policies by first reading, by title only?
Motion, read these policies first reading by title only?
Yes, yes. Second, great. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Board Member Brown. Go through them and just read by title only.
First policy is ACA, procedural safeguards, colon, non-discrimination on basis of disability.
Okay, thank you.
Second policy is GBCD dash RG parentheses one, background investigation and criminal record, oops, sorry, need to start over. Background investigation and criminal history records check, internal controls and procedures.
That's powerful.
The third policy is GBGBA, use and location of automated external defibrillators.
Which we have at each school. Just nice to say that out loud in public. Okay, thank you.
Next policy is IC, school year and school year calendar. Next policy is IHBA, programs for pupils with disabilities. Next policy is IHBA dash R parentheses one, programs for pupils with disabilities, dash section 504, dash notice of parent and student rights.
Thank you so much. We'll all be here at our June 10th meeting for a second read and for adoption. 7.2 are second readings. These policies are up for adoption and will be distributed and in effect if we adopt them. Do I have another motion to read them by title only? Please, and thank you.
Motion to read by title only.
Wonderful. Second, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll do it, we'll do it per, and then adopt per policy.
Okay. Then the first policy is for second reading, DGD, school district cards, credit, and procurement.
Oh. School district credit and procurement cards?
Oh, yep, I read it backwards.
That's all right. Do I have a motion to adopt this policy as presented?
I'm motion to adopt this policy as presented.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, wonderful.
Okay, second policy, DID, inventory and management of assets.
Motion to.
Motion to adopt. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, you guys can do however you switch off. Okay.
The next policy is EB. The next policy is EBCA, crisis prevention and emergency response plans.
Motion to adopt this policy as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The next policy is EBCH, chemical safety and chemical hygiene plan.
Motion to adopt, adopt?
Second.
Oh, I don't know if I can make the motions.
Okay, fine, motion to adopt this policy.
I usually, I think I have a couple times.
Oh, was that like a prompt?
All in favor? Aye, yeah, I usually don't, that's a prompt. All right, we have two more.
Then the, I only have one.
Oh, did you do EBC, that was part of E, that was?
I'm doing EBCH dash E, parentheses, one, next.
I would like to motion to adopt this policy as presented.
As presented, the addendum, okay, second?
Can I read the title first?
Oh, I thought you did.
No, I just read the, the, the policy, but the title is chemical hygiene plan, there you go.
Oh, well, now I motion to adopt the policy as now presented.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay. The last one, do you have this, Board Member Brown, the Summersworth School Board, School District exit interview form?
Likely.
I'll, I'll say it, yeah, that's, but it's, it doesn't have the, there's no title to it, where will this be? It's our policy, but is it under, yeah?
This is just the form that we'll be using, it's actually a survey that goes out, we are going to hyperlink the survey into the policy that's there, so we're not changing anything in the policy, the form just didn't exist in the policy, so now this will be a physical form that, that you can go to and see.
And the policy is under personnel, which is, aye?
Yeah, it's the exit, hold on.
So this Summersworth, we have an exit interview policy, this will be the form that's attached to it and be not required, but an option.
It's a G.
To have people filling this out, and then the, and then the information is reported back to the school board. But we can say it as is, because it doesn't have a letter attachment to it, so we can say, by title, the Summersworth School District exit interview form, do I have a motion to adopt this?
Motion to adopt.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Okay, perfect, all right. That's all right, just, all right, our food service contract renewal and meal prices, fiscal year 25, '26, we already kind of got a brief, like, an update about that, would you like to please?
Yeah, I'll just quickly just say, like I said, each year you approve the contract renewal, so this is our third renewal with Fresh Picks, we're allowed one contract and then four additional renewals, you know, after our fourth, then we have to go out to bid again. But along with that is meal price increases, so with the contract, Fresh Picks is proposing a 15-cent meal increase for elementary lunches, a 10-cent increase for middle and high lunches, and a 10-cent increase for adult lunches. Typically, every year, the district has to raise our prices by a minimum of 10 cents in order to show good faith that we're moving towards the amount that we, we're being reimbursed from the federal government for free lunch. Each year I have to do a paid, and paid lunch equity tool that tells me what we should be charging for our lunch, it's always way too high, that we never want to go that high for families, but we always have to do it at a minimum of 10 cents. Well, this year, the USDA is not requiring districts who had either a zero or a positive balance in their food service account at the end of the year to raise their prices if they choose not to. We did have a positive balance in our food service account, so the board does not have to raise prices. So what I've done is I've given you Fresh Picks' proposal with the 10-cent and 15-cent increase, and then I've also given you what it would be if you chose not to raise meal prices. So if you did their recommended proposal, we would break, basically break even, it would be a $933 profit to the, to the food service program. If you chose to keep meal prices where they are this year, you would need to subsidize the program by $10,398. So I wanted to give you two options, because I know a few years ago, the board, you know, they don't really, we really don't want to raise prices, I know we want to try to keep that balance for families. You can also choose to raise them any amount you want, it doesn't have to be that proposal or nothing, it could be someplace in between. I gave you the current meal prices on the second page, so I want to give you time to digest it and think it over, we can talk about it at the next meeting as well, we will have to approve it, though, at the next meeting, because over the summer, I have to get out family letters and all of that, so.
And if the board's amenable, just to have other board members here, and to kind of have this, have a first and second read, of course, we could waive rules and adopt it right now, but I'd like to have a little bit more feedback in the board, other board members here.
And if you want me to have Fresh Picks run some different scenarios, if you want to go up five cents, or if you want to go up, you know, different prices, I can certainly do that before the next meeting.
Um, yeah, thank you, I think, you know, so, you know, high, middle lunch is $3.30, breakfast $2.35, elementary lunch $3.10, elementary breakfast $2.05, this is full price, you know, all milk is 50 cents, remember when it was like 10 cents? Adult lunch and adult breakfast, adult lunch is $4.25, and adult breakfast is $3.25. I have had some feedback from the community, and I think city council, too, to a degree, about our elderly population and housing and folks like that, I have kind of spoke to people about a potential and of incorporating our elders to have breakfast or have lunch at our, one of our schools, one or many, and kind of have a program for that, because the prices are reasonable, and it would kind of incorporate our kind of mind of a community to be able to show up. And we've had, you know, we've had grandparents kind of in, in grandparent programs in, in other schools, but I know this isn't exactly what this is, but it's just a thought that I had, that could be a potential, more of a community builder than anything, and that we have these wonderful cafeterias and breakfast and lunch every day, that we could extend that. So, any other questions about what, where this is at, I'd like this to be a second reading of the 10th, and we can move on? Yep, okay, okay, thank you. All right, and then if you don't mind projecting our proposed calendar for '25, '26 school board meetings, again, we can get feedback on this for the June 10th meeting, but just for right now, so folks can see that we've, we've, we've taken away some meetings, I think most are, so this is kind of the proposal first show of it, we can share this with everyone as well. Board members, usually it's in, in policy kind, we can also look at this, too, is that if you miss three meetings in a row, it's kind of like, ugh, try not to, if you just don't show up, if you have a reason, that's fine, but if you just don't show up for three meetings, it's kind of like, okay, are you, are you here? But if there is a reason, that's, that's fine, so there are, this is less than, like, I think, three or four meetings less. I think it's, yeah, I think it's up to your discretion, usually letting me know if you don't, that's okay, too, but, no, I think it's, I think anything truly of not being able to make it, if you think, if you're just like, I don't want to represent anymore, then that's like, that's not a good faith as a representative. Any other reasons are just reasonable. So, pared down to one in November, December, April, and June, September, having two meetings just beginning of the year, October, two meetings beginning of the year, one in November, one in December, January to have, especially in an election year, to have two, and then February's budget, March 10th and 31st.
Yeah, because that's like the whole month, and then.
And then just one in April, one in June.
Just the June, do.
June is June 9th, I think.
Because April means actually the last week of April.
Yeah, these are, these are double-checked, yeah, and, so, so feedback, let, let me know in, yeah, yeah, and then the other thing is, too, timing, would we like to start at a 6:00 PM slot?
Yeah.
Would you like to start at a 7:00 AM slot?
Start at 6:00 PM slot.
Yes, yes, so, anything different, I think that, I can give you my reasoning for these, but I welcome feedback, I kind of just tried to put some, some things out, less than what we had this year, and we'll see how it goes, right? We haven't really canceled any meetings, because we have had nothing to talk about or nothing to do, especially with non-public to get through some of those, they can be shorter, I will try my best, as chair, oh, yes?
Oh, I'm open to a 6:00 PM slot, but only if we move back the mandatory ending time.
It's three hours. It's three hours, you have to have a, oh, no, wait, after 10.
After 10.
Yep. Now we have four hours. Three hours, we can put that in policy, that can be a policy change, I, we try not to do that, it's not like we're just.
No, I know, I just want to protect that draft.
You can always make a motion to adjourn at any time.
Wait, what?
So, these are them, I'll, just wanted to present, present them, present them, Tuesdays, proposal, 6:00 PM start, okay, a 6:00 PM start?
Does that work with everybody's? I'm into it. It must work better than what we have.
Seven's late for, yeah.
For a school, I mean, we have four of us here. I think it's helpful to have it.
Two are extenuating circumstances, it wasn't timing, but yes, I, I would work around, I think Tuesdays, oh, oh, Carly, was your microphone on? Oh, that's okay, that's all right.
Just, we have low attendance, so I think switching the time would be helpful.
Yeah, it didn't have to do with that, but I hear you, that's why, proposal, anything else about proposal, then we can bring it forward for the June 10th, if not now, later.
You know, I think it would probably be helpful for our school staff who don't live in the community, but who might want to attend, to be able to go home at some point, would be nice. Yes, six.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Just a flag to check the, the city council meeting dates, which I think currently are probably only through December, it's rare that they line up on a, like, like, if we go, yeah, to Tuesday because of a holiday, although usually it's the alternating week also, but I think only once or twice has it happened that it's the same time, and then it causes.
Yeah, we did have one this year that we had it on the same, so.
Yeah, just, just flag that, and if you pass this before we do ours for next year, I'll just, I'll do the same.
Did you already do it yet, or not for next year? Not yet, okay, okay, well, will it be, do you know when, if you give us a heads-up when it'll be, we can kind of align, if you get it.
It's usually in, like, November, December, we approve the calendar for the next calendar year. So it's, it's on a different, like, we do January, December.
Yeah, we don't have any for the school year yet, so that's why we're kind of ahead of it, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay. Any issues or anything come to me with, with the, with this plan, and we'll go from there for June 10th. Same goes for your end, for the superintendent or anyone, not that we require anyone to be here, other than John, but thank you.
The superintendent?
Yes, thank you, yeah, just wanted it up there, so it's, so it's visible, so it's visible, and now we'll share out, and then we'll have it on the June 10th meeting, so it's a public document. Oh, okay, nine, old unfinished business, our fiscal year '26 federal general assurances, we've had this for first reading already, signatures before June 1st, we're right there, and I believe we are signing, but we have an update.
Since the last board meeting, the federal general assurances for fiscal year 2026 were reissued, and they were included in your packet, and the language that many of us found most concerning, which is on page one, after the three-page cover letter, page one of 16, A, general assurances, paragraph six, sub-paragraph A, what was lined out is include, is the sentence or sentence fragment, including any guidance issued consistent with executive order 14151, which we reviewed at our last meeting, ending radical and wasteful government DEI programs and preferencing from the White House, January 20th, 2025, and the communication titled Reminder of Legal Obligations Undertaken in Exchange for Receiving Federal Financial Assistance, et cetera, and under Part B, including any guidance issued consistent with executive order 14168, which we reviewed at the last meeting, defending women from gender ideology extremism and restoring biological truth to the federal government. So, out of the blue, we received a update from the Department of Education on May 20th, saying that if you already signed the first form without these lined out, that's fine, that's great, no need to do it again with the new lined-out versions, but if we hadn't already submitted, and again, the deadline is June 1st, which is this Sunday, we could opt for the one with the language that I just mentioned, lined out. So there are two other places in the document which reference the, which is just further along, where they do reference the Dear Colleague Letter, which is under six K, and then on number 12, but that's language we already processed through the compliance order that we had earlier, so it would be my recommendation, as well as our legal assistance from the ACLU, which is one of the advantages of being in this lawsuit, is we have pro bono guidance on how to deal with these matters, that we do sign, they don't, you know, they would, they would suggest if you don't want to sign, you can make that determination, but we've kind of crossed that bridge that we want to sign wherever we can in order to protect our federal dollars and not risk them, given that they are being taken away, and we could put the cover letter on top of it, which does two things, it's somewhat of a statement of protest, but it also protects us from any concerns that we might be out of line with the executive order of the Dear Colleague Letter, and its ambiguity and vagueness.
And this was all in our agenda materials and for the public and on our website to review, so I'm looking for the board right now, since it is the superintendent and board chair, for a, a motion to give me, grant me the authority to sign this.
A motion to grant you the authority to sign that.
Thank you, sign to the general assurances, okay.
I will second that, but I do have a comment.
Yep, any discussion?
I just want to make sure, so, this is authorizing, and the recommendation is to strike out what looks to be, let's see, on page 54 of our materials.
We are not striking it out, the Department of Education struck it out and presented it as an alternative form to sign, so.
Thank you for that clarification.
For signing that one.
That's what I intended, that this is the one that is intended to be, give you authority to sign, is the one that has a struck it out.
Yes.
Stricken-out version that's in our packet, thank you.
Yep, that's in front of me, okay, any other discussion about this? Okay, all in favor of the general assurances signing with the cover letter and granting me the authority, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, because if we didn't get it all, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have quorum, and we can get this done, I'll sign that in a second, all right.
Yeah, take it out.
Anything else? Yep, I will, all right, yes, future meeting dates, can we do the regular school board meeting June 10th, and can we start at 6:00 PM to see how that feels for everyone? I think so, yeah, I think so, I think it'll, I think it'll be fine, if not, but if we can just change that, and the school board summary retreat.
I can't make that.
Yeah, we're, I'm going to have to send out a, a poll to everyone to see what dates can work. We workshops, if there's a majority there, we can video folks in, we would like to have it done, a workshop either in June, July, we typically don't want to do it, but we can, but I think June, would June be more ideal, and then maybe, yeah, June would be ideal, so we'll make it work if we can do a, I'll send out a doodle poll to get everyone's feedback on that, so. Any comments by visitors this evening? Any comments by visitors? You're welcome, come up, okay, seeing none? Any comments by board members? We do have a brief, we do have, well, I won't say brief anymore, but we have a non-public, non-publics, thank you to the, just want to, another congratulations to the, all the retirees, bittersweet, we wish them well. All right, looking at, for non-public, we're looking for a motion to go into non-public per 91A32B and E. Personnel, hiring, resignations, and negotiation, the CESP contract.
I motion to go into non-public for.
B. Be and E. 2B.
2B and 91A32E.
Perfect, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please, thanks.
[inaudible].
Yes.
Get in trouble. Sarah O'Brien-Hart.
Yes.
Marsha Brown.
Yes.
Carly Prescott.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lock.